All right, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna gavel again just to say, hey, good evening. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Council Vice President Martha Tashnik and our Livonia Knights? So kids, come on up. We're gonna look up here, and when you're ready to do it, be scared, those cameras are on you.
You guys ready to help me? Here we go.
(audience) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please job. Good job, kids. All right, with that, and thanks for everybody, we have our 2,000, our 10 U Tier 3 Livonia Knights in front of us. So basically, we won a district championship, and we've got the whole team here, and the good thing we can do from City Council is highlight your successes, and hopefully next year, you guys keep doing better and better and better. Right now, we're gonna wanna get a picture. We've got this really cool City Council commendation that Coach is gonna have to pass around everybody's house at least for a week, right? But we're gonna bring you up. Coach Kosh, do you wanna just give a little overview on the team? If not, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. If, if you wanna make your way to a microphone and either side, just tell us a little bit about the journey, maybe some highlights? Maybe keep the penalties out of it, but that was fine?
All right, my 10 U Livonia Red Knights, early successes, we went undefeated in our division, won the Little Caesars Championship for that, ended up going to the finals as well, and then we also won District 4 for Maha as well. These guys worked their tail off, they worked really hard all season, got better and better, and everybody improved, and they all skated really hard. So I'm really proud of them, and no matter what happens in the future with these guys, hockey or not, I know they're just gonna be successful no matter what.
Oh, 100%. No, we thank you guys. So right now, let's, we'll bring everybody up, get a picture, but let's, let's hear it for our Knights, guys. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I love it.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Guys.
Thank you.
All right.
(inaudible).
All right, let's go.
(inaudible).
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 I usually do it so I get, because you get out before the fun spot, but...
Get to the tryout, there's a tryout going on.
Wait, we can put, can we put our pins on?
(inaudible). I love it. All right, so that's the special recognition and tributes, it's always fun. All right, so the more formal part of the meeting, welcome to the 2017 regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, June 2nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Shiel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show six members of Council in attendance. Councilwoman Toy is unable to make it today, and she will not be here for the study as well. With that, I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on May 7th, 2025. Council? So moved. I got the motion made by Morgan, support by Budzinski. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Minutes carry 6 to 0. Jumping right into audience communication, the Council set aside 30 minutes for items that are not presently on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on any of those, please make your way to either podium, name and address in three minutes.
Sure.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Christina Sheldon. My address is 32640 Ohio Street. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I'm here to respectfully request a revision to a current city ordinance regarding cloth fence coverings after receiving a violation from the city inspector. I appreciate the Council, Council's dedication to maintaining our, our beautiful community standards, but I believe this ordinance in its current form unintentionally creates challenges for families like mine, and in many others who use these coverings for critical compassionate reasons. In our case, we installed a cloth fence covering not simply for aesthetics, but as a necessary measure to create a safe, calming, and semi-private outdoor environment for our autistic child, and to help manage our reactive dog. Like many other children on the spectrum, our child is extremely sensitive to outside stimuli. Things like passing cars, dogs, or even unfamiliar faces can be overwhelming and distressing. The covering provides a visual barrier that reduces overstimulation, creates a sense of security, and allows them to play in the yard with less anxiety. Our dog, who is reactive to visual triggers beyond the fence, benefits in the same way. The cloth covering helps reduce barking, stress behaviors, and other potentially, you know, reactions. It's not just about privacy, it's about protection, safety, and creating a livable, peaceful space for our family and our neighbors. The materials we've used are professional grade, well-maintained, and in neutral, non-distracting colors. I have pictures if you'd like to see them. Sorry, lost my spot. That blend into the environment. We understand the importance of preserving neighborhood appearance, and we strongly believe there's a path forward that balances those standards with the real-world needs of residents. Many cities have allowed and successfully updated similar ordinances to allow cloth coverings under specific guidelines such as color, material, upkeep requirements. I respectfully ask that our city follow suit and counter, or excuse me, consider revisions that reflect the diversity of our community's needs. As you all know, there's quite a few autistic children in this community. We are, the, the school is, school districts are known for the special needs program, my son included. My son has greatly benefited from us moving here in Livonia. We've been here two years. So we received a violation. Changing this ordinance isn't just about fences. It's also about allowing families the freedom to create safe, supportive spaces for their loved ones. We're not asking for less oversight. There's multiple neighbors in the neighborhood that have also agreed with this and been violated as well. We're only asking for more compassion and flexibility and how that oversight is applied. I have consulted with numerous other Livonia residents, and most agree this ordinance is outdated and restrictive. I'm willing to create a petition to collect an adequate amount of signatures in hopes that we can reconsider the challenge this prevents to many families within our community. Thank you again for your time and for your continued service to our community.
Thank you. Good evening.
I don't believe that was for me, that applause. I'll, I will accept it regardless, okay? Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. I do believe that was a good idea that the previous speaker had on that. And also, that makes me wanna talk about ordinance enforcement to a certain degree myself, okay? And last year, you heard a lot of people that had the courage to come up here and tell you how they were treated by some of these individuals. So I'm gonna tell you about just one of my stories. I have many. Steve Banko is a guy who's in charge of ordinance enforcement, and this happened a while back, but I think it really, it gives a insight into the, the thinking of someone like this. I was warned about Steve Banko's, what was referred to as his signature move, okay? And I said, what the hell does that mean? Signature, I said, you know, well, one day he'll come running at you, try to provoke you. And I thought, what, what is that about? And so that's exactly what happened. He pulled up one day, yeah, on Grantland Street, and I'm in the front yard over there, and gets out of the vehicle, and starts to walk towards me, and I tell him, you're trespassing. It's private property. At that point, he breaks into a dead run, right at me, and that's his signature move. But in the course of doing that, he says, I'm tired of your bullshit, and he comes running right at me just to stop inches away from me. But when I saw that happen, I put my hands in my pockets and just stood there, because he wasn't gonna catch me off guard, because I'd been tipped off about the guy. Now, had I not been tipped off, I might have, you know, tried to defend myself or whatever, because I didn't know what he was gonna do, okay? But that's exactly what he tried to, to do, was to get me involved in wrestling with him in some manner, or whatever, or hitting him, okay? Because he tries to take you off guard like that. And so anyway, that's Steve Banko's signature move. Now, he's actually in charge of the program, in charge of ordinance enforcement, okay? Now, that's one of the many stories that I have, okay? So I'm telling you out in TV land, watch out for Steve Banko's signature move, okay? Because you might have it happen to you one day also. But I do feel though that this is an opportunity that we still have here for free speech, and I hope it doesn't go away when somebody else gets elected as Council President. I don't wanna go back into the dark ages of not having free speech. But that's exactly what happened with Steve Banko, exactly what took place. And now, and they promoted that guy and put him in charge of the, of the ordinance enforcement. Been here quite some time, but he's the wrong guy, in my opinion, and that of many others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Good evening. How are ya?
Good. Hello, my name is Judy Weiser, 19718 Sussex, and I'm calling to see if we can get some money allocated to open up the bathroom, the structure at Ben Selini Bicentennial Park. I believe it's been there two years now, and when I called the city, they said it's only open when the pavilion is rented out. It's not, normally it's locked up. The structure that's, the play structure there is generally for under five-year-old kids. I mean, if you go there, it's pretty much, like I said, three, four-year-old kids playing on it. So just having a porta potty, while it's nice, it was not so nice last week when I had to hold my squirming toddler in there for five minutes before I went to the bathroom. And we have this beautiful structure that was built, and it's not being used. When I called the city again, they said it was due to staffing problems, and I don't know if that means they didn't have money to hire them, or they couldn't find workers, I don't know. I also tried to find out how many times the pavilion was rented last year, and I did not receive a call back. But I'm guessing it probably wasn't more than 20 times in the whole year. So it seems kind of a waste to have that structure there with the bathrooms and not have it open. I know when I posted on All Things Livonia, some people were saying they're worried about vandalism, but again, it's small children and their moms there during the day. So I'm thinking even if it was open from maybe like nine to eight or something every day, that that would be a reasonable amount. So I'm hoping they can find some money in your budget to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Okay. I just wanna address the 6 o'clock committee of the whole meeting. We had one, you guys had one last Monday, and you had one tonight, and Laura Toy, it was her motion, and she was concerned about stuff that happened, coming out of the clerk's office, and she was especially concerned about some of the affidavits from candidates who are running for City Council. Mistakes were made on the affidavits. And just so happens, in the Free Press, M.L. Elrich interviewed Robert Davis. He's the guy that got Duggan kicked off the ballot the first time he ran for mayor, because he made a simple mistake, and he then had to run as a write-in. So I just wanted to read you some of the excerpts from this article, and you can check it out yourself in the Free Press. John Pirik is a respected election law attorney, and he says lots of people get knocked off the ballot for silly reasons. In 2021, Michigan Court of Appeals set a candidate failed to check the box on her affidavit saying that she was a US citizen, broomed her. 2022, somebody just didn't say they were nonpartisan, got kicked off. And just last year, someone was kicked off the ballot because, just because he put the date of the general election on his nominating petition instead of the primary election. And that, exactly, some of the things that have happened in this election cycle here in Livonia. So, only strict compliance will satisfy the statute. This is what the judges say, substantial compliance does not apply to the mandatory provisions of Michigan election law. So whether you like these things or not, it is the law, and we are to follow the law. So the oversight errors are not trivial. Candidates should be able to follow the rules. If they can't fill out a form or put their correct name, why would anybody on God's green earth wanna elect them to a leadership position? So it's my contention, this addresses the integrity of the election, and I believe it's upon you. I think someone from Council should take this matter to circuit court and have a ruling, yea or nay. And if the judge says, nah, it's fine, everything's good, solid. Or if the judge says, they're off the ballot, you're protecting the integrity of the election. And I think, I think you're actually elected to do exactly that. One last thing, 8 o'clock meeting, item number 11, you have a consulting fee on here for the new police station facilities. As if the millage has already passed, and we're, we got shovels in the ground. You guys, this is what bothers people. The millage hasn't passed, you've got sunk costs of almost $2 million on this project, and we...
That's time, Mr. King. Thank you. The floor is yours.
I made it just in time.
You did.
Hey me. Deb Christensen, Livonia resident. In less than two weeks, does anybody know what's happening in less than two weeks? It is going to be Pride Month. I would really appreciate it, President, if you would have yourself or one of the members of the Council announce that in the beginning of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
You're getting to know me.
I know.
Well, you're gonna keep knowing me.
That's fine.
Until something's done. Okay. I have here...
Just for the record, for the people that don't know who you are, if you could give your name and address.
Oh, I am...
You're good, you're good. No, don't!
Ellen Jorman, 17211 Mayfield, Livonia, 48152.
And now your time has started.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I am just going to hand these, let's say...
You can hand them right here. You can hand them to Sarah.
Sarah will get them over to us.
For the sake of timing, I'm not reading that, but what it pertains to is what I've been here three times before. The group homes that are specifically in my area. I'm not talking two streets over, or five. I'm talking just like this. There is a diagram on there that, I've also stated that there's one person that owns, I think it's four without looking at my notes, and by the way, you can do something. Reason being, they're all zoned residential, and those are businesses. The only one that is zoned, our two, is the one next door to me. All the rest are residential. So they're breaking the law, because they are a business. So...
No, thank you for this. Honestly, we will, we'll do some digging.
I hope it'll be done before, because it's gotten out of hand.
No, right now with this, no, with this now, and I appreciate the drawing.
I'm sorry about the mess.
You know, you did, good, this is good. No, I appreciate you doing, I know you put a lot of time into this. We'll have a review on this, and we'll get ahold of you.
Yeah, it'll have to be...
And appreciate you put your phone number on here, so...
It'll have to be ASAP.
Okay.
Because we tried five years ago. Oh, we can't do it because of the state. Wrong. The city has zoned.
Let me get some clarification, but I appreciate seeing you again, and we'll see what we can find out. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bigga. I live at 35354 Lancashire. I'm here regarding the proposed millage bond proposal, whatever we're gonna call it, because everybody's confused. What's a bond? What's a millage? Could we get some clarification out there to the general population? What we're doing, what's being voted on, what's being decided? Because most people don't know, are they voting for a bond? Are they voting for a millage? Or is the millage what happens after the bond's approved? There's a lot of confusion out there. And to just rely on social media isn't really making it any better for people. I'd also like to say, the young lady who spoke about the bathrooms up at Bicentennial, I think it should be looked at at all the parks to see if they're all open, because I don't think it's right that we've put those bathrooms in there and they're not being able to be used by the people of the city who are there. I think that's a terrible thing. Additionally, going back to the proposed civic center, whatever you're gonna call it these days, have, as part of the previous studies, has any ground review been done to see if you can really execute the plans that have been presented as to what's being done and where? Because I think that's gonna impact on people when they vote, because if they think they're voting for a police station next to the courthouse, and a city hall, and a library next to each other that are built on unsteady ground, and we find out later after it's all been approved that, oh no, we can't build it here, so we'll have to do, get more money to fix the ground so that we can really build, or no, we have to build it somewhere else. I think it's foolish to be putting all this ahead if we haven't done some groundwork ahead of this whole big project, that ultimately, with interest in what you've already improved, approved for the city hall build, and undemolition, which for some reason hasn't been budgeted, of $300 million is a lot for the city and for the residents to have to absorb. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. How are ya?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for asking. Lynn Mills, Plymouth Road. I'd like to start with a PSA. Stay away from Plymouth Road, Newburgh Road, Ann Arbor Trail, Ann Arbor Road. It's a hot mess. I don't know how any emergency vehicle will get through there. Anyway, I'd like to start with a little history, Livonia. I did some research. I cannot say this for sure, but I believe Catholic Central wanted to buy Bentley. I don't know if anybody here can verify that for me. Maybe it worked out best that Catholic Central wound up in Wixom. I, as a Catholic Central mother, we have another Catholic Central mother back there. I know I have to look at you, I can't look at the audience. I really wanted it here in Livonia. Maybe it worked out better for Catholic Central that they're in Wixom. Again, St. Michael's wanted to buy Rosedale School in the subdivision of Rosedale. Most people maybe think Rosedale School is the old Johnson School. It's not. It was a two-story old building in the subdivision. Instead, it was torn down, stayed vacant, that land for years. I don't know who bought it. They built houses there. I'm giving two examples of buildings that were wanted, and torn down for other purposes. That's just, St. Michael's wound up building a junior high attached to the building that they have. I'm just throwing it out there. I also wanna bring up, I remember voting on this, Mayor McNamara was the mayor. We had Robert McCann, John Fenstra, David Gunstren, Barbara Taylor, Ronald Bennett, Charles Ventura, and Kenneth Bishop. Does anybody remember back in 1984, probably you're all so young, it was on the ballot, I have it here, from the fire history. I left my glasses in the car, I'm sorry. City plans to make the fire department volunteer-based. Anybody have any recollection of that? I know you can't answer me. Citizens vote to enshrine employed firefighters based on population into the city charter. Who came up with that idea? Again, you can't answer me. Voted that down. Who came up with that idea? I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that.
It's like, stop coming up with bad ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Good evening, sir. Name and address, you got three minutes.
Nicholas Scott, 326220 Ohio Street. Actually, Christina's my neighbor. So I'm kinda here for the same thing, so I won't go too far into it, just to let you know that when I looked at the ordinance, it did say a lot of things more addressing the affixing to the fence as it pertains to being in the ground, and ours are just really attached to the fence, so to speak. So I just wanted to make sure. I don't know how it works as far as, like, how you guys look into it, and then you guys get back to us, or you like, make a decision. How's that, how's that work?
So with this, I, I usually bring this up, Council Communications right, it follows audience communications. So we've been taking notes.
Okay.
And I'm sure we're all gonna talk about it.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
All right, well, I'll do that, and I'll let you guys do your thing.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a go.
Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, 36099 Brookview. I just have one question. I know that I've come before you in the past and asked specific questions, and just wanted to know exactly what Council's and the mayor's policy is to address things that are brought up during these meetings. So, if somebody could let me know what that is.
You got it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, I'm gonna jump to Council. I'll give it to Vice President. I'm just gonna say, my boring things for the legalities are, there's new data on items 3 and 8. Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, how we respond, I'm gonna give you an example right now. As far as the cloth covering on the fence, and honestly, Livonia is known for its autistic program in LPS, and we're proud of that program, and it attracts a lot of students with that, you know, with that special need. And to me, this is a hardship that you have with this. So we have a couple of options here. You could go before our zoning Board of Appeals and ask for a waiver. I don't know if they would grant it or not, but if you demonstrated hardship, they might be willing to do that. So that's definitely one road you could take, as far as that goes. The, the ordinance was put into place because Livonia was trying to prevent these little walled communities. But sometimes, you know, we have to look at, at a waiver on something like that. However, I would like to look at this a little bit deeper, and I would like to make a motion to send this to the Law and Education Committee.
Support.
Thank you. So this would, this would let it go to committee so that we can have a deeper understanding, talk to our ordinance director, et cetera, and see if that's something we need to pursue.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table right now. Any other comments from Council? Anything from the audience? Now, this is just to put this item in committee, we just have to formally vote on it. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item passes 6 to 0. Yep.
Okay. So what we just did is we voted to put that into committee so that we can have a formal conversation about it. And then at that point, if we decide to refer it to law, then it would go to an ordinance. But that will be posted, it'll be public, a public meeting that you would be willing to, you know, if you would be willing to attend, you could also talk about it more at that.
Can I ask a question?
No, no, not on this. We'll follow up after, or if you'd wanna stay at the study.
If you wanna stay till the end of the meeting, you can come up and talk to us then. If you wanna stay till the end of the meeting, you can come up and talk to us then, informally.
Our Roberts rules of order are very strict with it, but if you wanna send us an, an email, um, we'll get back to you if you can't stick around.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, I do know we have our Department of Governmental Affairs Director in the audience. He may be to your left pointing at you, uh, telling you to come talk to him. So that could always be an option to you, Mr. President.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, guys. And even with that, I know you're walking out. Um, we could probably ask our department head to put a, put a hold on whatever the violation until such time we have our committee meeting. Well, you're here. That's fine. We'll, we'll see what we could do, uh, on the notes since this... Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to the audience communication. Oh, Councilman Donavick. Oh, do you still have some?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Um, I did have a couple other things. Um, the millage versus the bond, that just came up from an audience member as well. So I don't wanna confuse the issue by saying it's kind of both. But what we're gonna be doing is taking a hundred, you know, up to 150 million. We're gonna do 100 million and then up to maybe another 50 million. These will be municipal bonds that the city would be drawing. The millage is to pay for the bonds. So there's some semantics that go into that. So when we ask, is it a bond? Is it a millage? Yes, but that, that's kind of, if you think about the bond as being like your mortgage and the millage would be the payments that we're collecting.
I think you need to explain that to the citizens.
Well, sir, you can't, you can't yell out to me.
No, we've got it. Yeah.
But we, yes, I understand that there is some confusion out there and I will pass that on and make sure that that is part of our talking points as we are going on. But that, that is, and I warn everybody, never rely on social media for your information because there's a lot of misinformation out there. Things get confused and twisted. Um, couple, and by the way, livoniambuilt.org is a good place for information. If you go there, there's FAQs, there's, you know, all kinds of overviews, you know, and a calculator on how much you're gonna pay. Um, you can put in your, you know, your information and just to see exactly what the impact will be to you. So livoniambuilt.org if you look for that. Um, a couple other things real quick. I went to the Rotary Wine Pool on, uh, Saturday. I know I saw President McCullough there as well. Um, that was a great event. I just wanna give a shout out to the Rotary for putting that on. Always a great event. Mother Nature didn't really cooperate, but it was okay. The wine was fun.
There's wine, so that, he's had a drink a little more.
It was, it was a great event and I just, every year that, I think this was their third annual and it's always a great event. So kudos to the Rotary Club. And last but not least, uh, this Saturday, we have the, or I'm sorry. The 29th, we have the Memorial Day Ceremony at 9:00 AM in Memorial Plaza. So just make sure, that is the 29th. I'm sorry, I just said the Saturday. Um, that is a great event. It's very solemn. Um, we honor... The Saturday, right?
It is the Saturday.
Oh, my goodness, the dates are getting away from me. Yes, it is the Saturday. Sorry. Um, so that is the Saturday at 9:00 AM in Memorial Plaza. If you don't know where that is, it's across the street from Bates. Um, and that's usually the landmark where people know.
There we go.
So, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. And thanks to our Vice President for bringing up this Saturday's Memorial Day event. It's something that the city's been doing for a long time and it honors our fallen. I know Councilman Morgan served in the military and so did I. And a lot of veterans in Livonia paid the ultimate sacrifice and across our country. So it's really amazing that the city continues this tradition for so many years. There's always really great speakers and, and we have a beautiful wall, uh, Vietnam Memorial Wall across the street at Five and Farmington. So if you've not been there, I suggest, uh, you take your family there. It's pretty nice to see these young kids here earlier today pledging allegiance to the flag. This is the greatest country in the world. So it's nice to see those young people doing that. Also, uh, May 22nd, this is this Thursday, our Livonia Police Officers will be paying their respect to some of our Livonia fallen officers. Uh, there have been multiple officers that died in the line of duty here in Livonia over the years. So that will be at Larry Knie Hazel Park, uh, which is right here on the Civic Center campus. Uh, we're very fortunate. We have a lot of cops that pay, uh, pay a price every single day. But unfortunately, some have paid the ultimate price. And if you'd like to pay your respects, there is a nice memorial service at 7:30 PM. 7:30 PM this, uh, Thursday. And then also, uh, me personally, uh, Mr. President, I'll be holding a town hall, uh, next Wednesday, May 28th, 6:30 PM. 6:30 PM until 8:30, uh, at the library next door. Uh, it's Wednesday. That's the Livonia Built Bond Proposal. So it will be just a Q and A with me at council meetings. We have, uh, it's formal. Roberts rules of order. We're conducting official business at this meeting. I'll be at town hall. An opportunity for me to just kinda talk about the proposal and some of my, uh, personal opinions on it as, as one council member and as a resident. Be an opportunity to ask some questions and I'll try to answer those. And that will be again Wednesday, May 28th, 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM at the Civic Center Library. Uh, there's a few things that are brought up, uh, throughout the meeting from some of the residents. I know bathroom facilities came up. I know this has come up over the years. There are some, uh, I'm not the Parks and Recreation Director. I know that number of council members will, will reach out. I know our Parks Rec Director Ted Davis, uh, has, has been on top of this. It's something, I know there's some technicalities there as to when the bathrooms are open and closed. I know it's due to staffing. I know someone has to unlock and lock those. I know that it has to do with cleaning. I know that has to do with rentals as well. So I don't have all the answers right now. I'm not sure if anyone in council knows specifically, but I do believe there are some processes and procedures there 'cause this has come up over the years. And then also, uh, someone, uh, was saying some outlandish things about one of our ordinance officers. Uh, we're lucky to have a good ordinance department here in Livonia and they're the people that make sure people cut the grass and, uh, take care of their trash and take care of some of the vacant buildings in our community. So I know, uh, Mr. Banko and, and, uh, not personally, but I know a lot about him and the ordinance officers in our ordinance department. And they do a lot of good work and, uh, you'd be shocked that some of the people that don't take care of their properties, um, oftentimes wanna complain about the people that are trying to enforce, uh, these really good ordinances on the books to make sure that people take care of their homes. I know I take care of my home. I know 99% of people in this community take care of their homes. And it's not an easy job. Some of our police officers, they get blamed for doing their job. So our ordinance officers do a pretty good job and I'm thankful for what they do. And Mr. Hannah, actually tonight on the study meeting, we're gonna be talking about a building that was, uh, a really rundown vacant, vacant building. The roof had caved in. It was infested with rats and whatnot. And our ordinance department worked very hard on that. And tonight, we're gonna be seeing a, at the eight o'clock meeting, we'll be seeing a, a 2,500 square foot office building proposal now that's kinda run its course through that vacant blighted dilapidated building those residents had to deal with. So you ask those residents in that area, I bet they're pretty dang happy with Mr. Banko and our ordinance department that got that building demolished. And now they're gonna see a brand new building there. So, uh, thank you to our ordinance department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. Uh, Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yes. Um, so I will start, but just following up on a couple of public comments too. I wanted to know, it was said that the, the bond millage would be 300 million and it is not. It would be, um, up to 150 million dollars with the first draw being 100 million. Um, on the bathroom part, I, we do get asked about this a lot. So I, I know Rob stepped out, um, but I will ask the administration to share with us a restroom schedule, um, for how Parks and Recs, you know, what bathrooms we have at different parks and then what is their schedules for being open and how that's decided. Oh, there he is. So we would like the administration to provide us with a bathroom schedule for our parks. What parks have bathrooms and when they are opened. And then we can go over that further as needed. Um, and then a couple of just announcements or updates. Um, this past Saturday, I had invited council candidates to come to my coffee hour and provided everyone four minutes to speak. We had a great turnout. Thankful to Madonna University for opening up their Welcome Center so that we had appropriate space to, um, fill all the attendees. If you would like to watch the comments of the, um, candidates, it is on my Facebook page, Carrie Budzinski, Livonia City Council. Um, and you can watch it at your leisure. Um, and my next coffee hour will be on June 14th with Council Vice President Martha Tashnik. We'll be talking about the budget. Um, that, we'll be back at the Civic Center Library at 11 o'clock. It is a Saturday. Everyone is welcome, um, to attend. A few more events that I'm hosting, uh, the Livonia Women's Connection is June 1st. It is from 1 to 3. It's a free networking event. We'll be at Cardwell Florist. Again, everyone is, um, welcome to attend. It is just designed with women in mind. Um, I am hosting two Recycling 101 events with Priority Health to help people know what can be recycled in our new big recycling bins. You know, it can feel a little overwhelming or we're not sure what can go in there. So, um, their recycling specialist is gonna just literally go through, like, does this milk jug work? You know, how do you, uh, what boxes can be put in? You know, we have a lot of cross, um, processed materials these days. And so it's difficult to always know what can we recycle and what can't we. So we'll get some questions answered. On June 5th, we'll be at the Civic Center Library. All ages are welcome to attend. It'll be an evening event at 6:30 PM. And then on June 13th, I'll be at the Senior Center. This will be the same presentation. It's just at different times for different groups. Um, because it's at the Senior Center, it is for 55 and older. That will be at 1:00 PM after the luncheon party that they'll be hosting at the Senior Center that day. Um, and then on June 17th at 7:00 PM, I will be doing my own Q and A about the Livonia Built Bond. Um, I will be posting on social media and in my newsletter or anywhere someone wants to send questions to. I will go on Live Facebook and answer those questions, um, take questions as they're being asked as well. So if there is confusion or uncertainty about what this millage proposal means for our community, again, please go to livoniambuilt.org, um, but also know that you can ask any one of us and we're happy to, um, you know, help explain it. So that is it. Oh, that'll be at 7:00 PM on June 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on counsel? Um, I just wanna, it, it's kinda funny to listen to all this stuff. We got an awesome community. Um, you know, we start off with the hockey players. It's a, it's a community of grit 'cause we, we, we always have different views and stuff, but to hear, you got a Q and A, you were at the Rotary Wine Pool, you have a Q and A coming up. You know, i- it's engagement in the community and I, I just wanted to go on record and appreciate. I wanted to give you some kudos, Carrie especially on that event. I mean, we've got 20 candidates out there. Well, maybe, yeah. Um, and to, to provide in a world that doesn't really cover a ton of local news, especially in Livonia, a lot of these candidates don't get that chance. So it really does go away. So kudos to you and thank you for doing that. Thank you all for doing that and even the candidates that are here looking to help their city. Those are shining moments in a crazy world that we live in right now. So it's nice to see. Thank you. Um, with that, I'm gonna move on to the, uh, the meeting in some theories. And, uh, we don't have any reports from the mayor and any other city officials. And I am now gonna move on to consent agenda. Items one through five on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on May 7th. And to be, and determined to be non-controversial, I'm gonna go to the Vice President 'cause we do have, we're gonna do something.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to pull item three from the consent agenda.
Okay. We're gonna, so if we get, yeah, the floor is yours.
Okay. Um, it says in the consent agenda that we are gonna refer it to law. Actually, if you look at our packet, the ordinance is ready to go, so we do not need to refer it to law. So by removing it from the consent, we can go ahead and provide a first read if that's what we choose to do. But I'd like to get it off consent.
Yep. So item three on the consent will now become item eight for the unfinished business. And with that, so I'm gonna now ask that, moving on the consent agenda, items one through, one through five minus three, obviously, on the consent agenda, were voted on as white items, discussed. Um, and determined to be non-controversial, can I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
I have motion from Vice President, uh, support from Councilman Morgan. Um, any discussion from counsel? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shield.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the consent, uh, agenda passes six to zero. Um, just a point of information to our city attorney. Um, is it fine if I do the meetings of committees first before I put the unfinished business? Or should we just go right directly to this one we pulled off?
You can do it in either order.
You guys have any issues? Okay. So I'm just gonna jump right into the unfinished businesses, there's meetings of the committees. We're gonna jump right into item six, is a committee of the whole that took place on May 12th, 2025. The subject matter of investigation into city departments and their procedures as it relates to the city charter. This is the committee of the whole. The report out, the meeting commenced at 6:00 PM. Uh, we did have, um, all members of counsel, um, at that meeting. We also had multiple department heads. Uh, the meeting was more of, of, open on the, the topic that was brought up in one of the prior committee meetings to discuss different items. Um, there was a list that was presented at that time, uh, to the clerk that we'd like to get some information. We did allow time for those, uh, items to be addressed and we actually just followed up with a meeting that took place prior to this meeting that will be reported out, um, at the next council meeting. Um, with that being said, the meeting adjourned at 6:39 and the item will remain in committee. So that's the committee of the whole. Um, I can go to the audience if they have any questions. Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to item number seven. Is another committee report out from the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Technology Committee, meeting that took place on May 12th. The subject matter is blighted and vacant businesses on Plymouth Road, CR 90-25. Councilwoman Budzinski, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I will try to keep this brief. Um, the committee began at 7:01. Um, the topic was, um, blight and vacancy of businesses along Plymouth Road. It's a high priority for residents in a unique area in Livonia due to the special assessment on businesses, um, in the area and its inclusion as targeted development area in Livonia Vision 21. Um, different council members gave remarks. Um, our Inspector Director Jerome Hannah discussed the city's vacancy ordinance and shared that there are six registered paying a monthly fee and six unregistered vacant buildings along Plymouth Road corridor. He explained how the department oversees and enforces blight and vacancy. Um, they are moving more cases to the court following the 2023 city council meeting and putting an emphasis on enforcement for tall grass and weeds. Um, vacant property owners are billed if the city cuts grass for them. A couple of cases, um, are currently in court, including, um, Dobby's Tuxedo. Uh, Director Hannah indicated his goal is to get all vacant buildings registered so that they can be tracked. It was noted that a challenge, um, in this process is that if property owners maintain their property and/or keep up with taxes or fines, they can't be compelled to sell. Um, City Attorney Carter Fisher explained, uh, vacancy fees and how the system works for a fee schedule. Councilwoman Shield put forward a motion to have the administration offer a report and recommendation to update the fee schedule to be more aggressive and provide for compounded annual rate. Um, with that, in the Home Rule Cities Act, uh, state ordinance, uh, cities can pass, um, uh, an ordinance that would allow the city to prevent a property owner from moving forward in a development project at one site if another is considered vacant or blighted, and this will also be explored. Um, specifically, there were concerns, um, mentioned about the House of Denmark from council members and from local business owners. Explanations were given about what the city can do regarding fees, um, but the challenges again in, in forcing anyone to sell. Um, Planning Director Mark Toramina went over, uh, the role the Plymouth Road Development Authority plays um, in improvements along the corridor and also shared information about the Bronzefield Development Authority and the commercial rehabilitation exemption. Um, as investors communicate with the city about their plans to invest, the planning department walks them through the various, um, support programs um, that could be available for their proposed projects. Um, I had also brought up, um, marketing, um, and ways to update the PRDA page to promote businesses along Plymouth Road and that will continue to be explored. Um, as noted, recommendations from the committee were that the administration provide feedback on, provide an update on the fee schedule and look at a compounded or annual penalty for blighted and vacant properties. Um, this item remains in committee and we adjourned at 8:23 PM.
Awesome. Um, great work. Anything from the counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to formally make that motion that I made in the meeting. Do I need to formally make that here? Okay, to ask, um, so, administration. A report from administration of what, what we can do to increase our ordinance fees up to the maximum allowable and to be able to also add a compounded fee for how many years that, that's been empty? The building has been empty. Support.
Mm-hmm. Floor is yours if you'd like to say anything else, but I think you kinda memorialized it.
I did. And Carrie gave a great report out, so I think that explained it.
Awesome. Yes. Awesome, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Councilwoman Scheel for making that motion. It'll be interesting to see what the Law Department reports back with, with that. There are legalities here with the state. The state only allows locals to impose a certain level of fee and/or some sort of penalty on property owners. It gets even deeper when you talk about tall grass and weeds. Some people, it's subjective. Some people may think that looks good and it may be technically protected. So I know the city is kind of, there are legalities there at the state level, but I do think there is room for more movement. As I said earlier, our ordinance department does a phenomenal job. They have a tough job enforcing standards on bad actors and we have a lot of bad property owners in our community, unfortunately. But that's not unique to just Livonia. I mean, we go through every single community and residents are complaining about the same thing. So I do think it's going to be interesting to see what Law Department comes back with their recommendation, as I do think there is room for tougher penalties. But I don't want to penalize building owners that are going through the process. So I think there's going to be a fine line, but I do look forward to, to that recommendation and I'll be in support of this evening's motion, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Just to clarify, to make sure that I'm capturing this resolution accurately, there are two resolutions that were listed in the attorney notes that you received prior to this meeting. One related to research into updating the fee schedule and possibly compounding fees annually and one related to other penalties that we can assess for blighted property, blighted and vacant properties. Are we just making a motion on the first resolution?
Both.
Or combining them? Okay.
Yeah, can we capture that in that current motion?
Sure.
Okay. Perfect. Well, we do have a motion. We have support. Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the motion carries six to zero. Yes.
Mr. President, I just wanted to, now that we're not talking about the motion anymore, we're talking about the committee meeting, thank you to Councilwoman Buzinski on hosting that meeting. She is the Chair of Economic Development and Strategic Planning, so that was a good committee structure, talking about this, this issue. I know we've had a lot of discussions about it. I know a few years ago, myself and Councilman McCullough, we also did something similar and it was a good meeting back then. But there was a lot of people this time around, so maybe more people are talking about vacant and blighted buildings. And again, just a shout out to our ordinance department, they have a tough job. They're trying to enforce penalties on people that don't take care of their properties. And the planning, planning department, planning economic development led by Mr. Toramina to my left, they're trying to help stimulate business and they talk to people. I know because I talk to a lot of business owners in our community and they always tell me they spoke to Mr. Toramina and they're great to help navigate the red tape and bureaucracy and just the rules and regulations as you deal with at the local county and state level. And I think Mark and his team and Jerome and their team do a phenomenal job. It is frustrating, vacant and blighted buildings. We've been talking about it. I've been on council for six years, myself and the president, and we've been talking about it since 2019. And some of these buildings, you can't as a government force them to sell their property. You can't force them to lease their property. They own their property, they pay property taxes on it, they maintain some better than others. So just again, our hands are kind of tied, but I do think there is more movement in terms of penalties for blighted properties, people that have their grass a foot tall. I was driving up on the road today in the Burger King and there's a, there's a mechanic shop and there's a few places up and down Plymouth Road that their grass is a foot and a half tall and it's just absolutely ridiculous. And that's something we deal with every single year. And then there are buildings that are vacant and dilapidated and falling down. And again, you'll see in the study meeting, the petitioners here this evening, and they solved one of those problems. And that's going to be a huge victory for our city. And I do think there's some movement. Again, I've been talking to Mr. Toramina's office and there's some potentially significant movement on some vacant buildings in our area and I'm looking forward to those being redeveloped. And just again, thanks to Carrie and the team for hosting that meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Floor is yours, Carrie.
Yeah, just thank you for reminding me of the nice turnout that we had. And I really wanted to recognize our council manager, Sarah. I'd ask the assessor, well, she, she's the woman who gets it done for us. And I'd ask the assessor's office to pull the addresses and then she actually made sure that we reached out to the building and business owners along Plymouth Road in an effort to get as many voices as we could at the meeting. So thank you, Sarah, for your help with getting that successful committee meeting together.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, concerns with the, the item number seven, the Economic Development? Council, audience? All right, we're moving on now to the new number eight. Is a proposed amendment to the Livoney Court of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the office of the city clerk to revise sections to the Title I, Chapter 1 dot 08, election precincts, to maintain ballot alignment with previous consolidated precincts. Council, can I get a first read?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll offer the first read since I pulled it.
Perfect. So we have a first read. Councilwoman Scheel?
Sure. Through the chair to the clerk. So when I go on to our city website and I go on to the clerk's page and I go on to the voting precinct map, I get an old map that comes up, not the one that we voted on in March, but one from October of 2022.
IS is working on fixing that. They've not quite finished it. So we're working with IS.
Okay, so it's in the process of being fixed. Okay, so it's a good thing to let the residents know that that map that's showing up is not correct and there's one that should be up.
Yeah, the new one is coming.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? We have a first read. Now we're going to move on to item nine on unfinished business as a waiver petition. Comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-02-02-06 submitted by NC Designers and Contracting, requesting special, requesting waiver use approval to construct a 2,117 square foot full-service oil change facility at 27410 Joy Road located on the northwest corner of Joy and Inkster. Council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving.
We have support.
Support.
We got support from Councilwoman Buzinski. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the petitioners here this evening and this is going to be a much-needed project at this corner. It's been vacant and blighted for a long time. It'd be a nice new construction. It's a primarily brick building, really nice exterior facade, and the petitioner's done a good job working with the community. There were some issues there before and he solved those issues. So I think this would be a nice win for the corner of Joy and Inkster, much needed. I'm looking forward to having a really successful business, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else from council? All right. Anything from the audience? Mr. Martin? You got two, name and address, you got two minutes.
Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. Just want to make sure to get some clarification here because the last meeting where this gentleman was at, I thought he was treated really harshly on some taxes that young Mr. Donavich wanted to make sure that were paid. Taxes are really always taken care of at closing, but evidently now there's a love fest that is going on here. So were the taxes paid for? And, okay, well, people need to, people need to know that. People need to know that then, that prior to the closing, this gentleman stepped up and paid taxes basically that weren't owed by him because he's the buyer, okay? They're owed by the person who currently has.
Mr. Martin, just for the first time, just to cut you off.
Yes.
Before you popped up, that's exactly what I was going to say. I'm just using that card.
Well, I don't want to, then I don't want to take your time.
No, I was, I was, for what it's worth, because it's.
But I think, I think it's important to say, because I really thought that young Mr. Donavich was really grandstanding, okay? That's exactly what he was doing. And I felt sorry for these guys, to be quite honest, investing that type of money just to have him put on a show and that's all it was. So I wish them nothing but the best, okay? And.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Continued luck.
All right. No, I was going to tell the petitioner, the last meeting, we did, there were some unpaid taxes. And if anybody knows that corner, I mean, I, I'm familiar because I grew up in that area. I know Councilman Donavich is in that area right now. And, you know, I, I remember the, the Vernors on the opposite corner, that sign that's posted. That corner has been vacant forever. So I want to say thank you, good luck. I, I mean, you know, anything you guys need for within reason, let us know. Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the petitioner, I'm not in love with you, I'm sorry. I am in love with your building. And I know there was a comment about me and grandstanding. If we collected 16 some odd thousand dollars in property taxes, I'm pretty happy. That's going to go to our cops, it's going to go to our firefighters, it's going to go to our parks. So I'm pretty excited about the community collecting 16,000 dollars in property taxes that were passed due. And thank you to the petitioner for getting that job done and being a good corporate sponsor in our community.
No problem. Well, hopefully right now, yeah, if there's nothing else from the audience, council's good. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the item carries six to zero. I was going to say, go get those buckets in the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving, moving on to item number 10. Is a request to approve early voting plan comes to us from the office of the city clerk in reference to local elections to be held in 2025, persuading to MCL 168 dot 720E. Council? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support it.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Any comments from the audience on this item? Two minutes, name and address, the floor is yours.
Deb Christensen, again, Livonia. I, there's not a lot of clarification on this, just this one little sentence, so I don't know if you're able to speak to that. But my concern, if this is what's happening, is voter suppression. And if the voting is to happen two days prior to the date of the voting date, like the early voting, and it happened here, when the city is concerned about ADA compliance, that's also a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi there, Laura Janica, Monger Street. Talk about the same thing Deb is. First of all, I do want to thank the clerk for offering to do the pre-voting. I mean, it is important and it isn't, I know it is optional. However, the early voting plan presented by the Voting Commission limits access to just two days in an inaccessible city hall. The plan isn't flawed, it is illegal under multiple civil rights laws. Under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, any program receiving federal funds, including federal elections, must be accessible to individuals with disabilities. Under Title II of the ADA, this city is required to provide full and equal access to public programs and services, including voting. City Hall currently fails this legal standard. The ramp is too steep, the doors are not automatic, there are not accessible restrooms, and those are a basic human necessity. These barriers exclude disabled voters from fully participating in democracy. The exclusion is also a violation of the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination in public accommodation on the basis of disability, as well as the Michigan Election Law, which requires that early voting be accessible to all voters under proposal two. To be clear, voter suppression is a denial of city rights, civil rights, and the Fourteenth Amendment Equal Protection Clause that protects liberty, dignity, and equal movement.